And she drives about seven miles an hour all the way up.
Seven miles an hour?
Seven miles an hour.
Gillian only drives seven miles an hour?
I'll never forget when she, she hit her first one and she thought it was the end of the world.
Oh, that's pretty traumatic.
Oh my God, and she barely did any damage.
I hit two of them last year, twelve thousand hours both times.
What? Of course, on the front end, that doesn't take much.
So then I bought a new vehicle.
Especially these days on any of the vehicles, it does not take much to hit.
With the sensors and.
I mean headlights.
Yeah.
You got a whole assembly there.
Yeah, headlight tub is pricey.
Does not do much.
No. Not in the least. I'd like to welcome everybody to our Monday, March tenth, twenty twenty-five Cascade City Council meeting. We'll have a call to order with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Oliver, here. Weber?
Here.
Hush?
Here.
Gail?
Here.
Delaney?
Here.
I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Hush?
I'll second it.
Second by Oliver, all in favor?
Aye.
Number five, public comment. You have a limit of three minutes per person on agenda items and local government issues. Seeing none, we'll go to consent agenda. City council minutes, two, twenty-four, twenty-five. Cascade Library Board minutes, three, four, twenty-five. February month-end reports, March tenth, twenty twenty-five claims. Is there any questions about the consent agenda?
I've got a couple. For the council minutes, in regards to the tax increment payments, section, page two. I'd ask for clarification on five eight four, and the council received clarification on five eight one. I was wondering if you could.
Yeah, I did reach out and try to get that clarification, and I have not heard anything back, so.
Okay.
Once I do, I will, I will relay that to you guys.
Okay, and then claims, I, Lang signed the group, is that, was that fifty percent down, like it's page forty-nine? There's four items, and I think it's sixty-seven, twenty-three. Is that for donors or something?
That's for all of the signage for the library project, the donor signs, all the signs in the rooms. People sponsored so much money and had rooms named after them. All of those kind of signs also, all of the signage.
So the total will be a little over thirteen thousand?
Uh huh.
Any other questions? If none, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Oliver?
Second.
Second by Weber, all in favor?
Aye.
Number seven, discussion on proposed construction of Third Avenue Southwest and Hayes Street Southwest reconstruction.
So this kind of came about, I know during budget discussions, we talked heavily about trying to do some street reconstruction. And shortly after the last council meeting, notification came out about a possible grant opportunity. So I'm talking with Public Works, we kind of identified a number, a top priority, street project. That will not only get a street reconstructed, but also help with a water quality issue. So that's the one, that's this particular street project. So we reached out to Jake and had him put together a concept and a cost proposal.
Thanks, everyone. Jake Dever, MSA in Dubuque. Nice to see you all again. So I put together just a few notes and thoughts on a quick memo, and then presented the detailed cost opinion and conceptual design exhibit. So I did meet with Phil and the guys last Tuesday to walk the corridor and look, discuss utilities with Phil and Marty, and talk about what we would anticipate for the project. So the concept was built around basically residential street reconstruction. We assumed thirty-one foot back-to-back with five-foot curb sidewalk on the west and north side of the street. That pretty much matches existing conditions, ADA compliant sidewalk and curb ramps throughout. There is an existing four-inch main that is subject to breaks, has some water quality complaints on that corridor. We replaced that with an eight-inch main, similar to what we did on the Garfield Street reconstruction project, and similar to the second, second of southeast water main replacement project that we did. Both of those alleviated quite a, quite a few of the water complaints. And replacement of the existing sanitary sewer manholes and mains, which are in poor condition. And it'll also include replacement of water service and sanitary sewer service laterals to the property line. And then this one also includes replacement of the storm sewer in the corridor. This one, we can't really get around reconstructing that street without replacing the storm sewer components. A couple of design assumptions and/or constraints wanted to note, at least initially. The right of way is only forty foot through there, so if we're going to stick with parking on both sides of the street, we're not going to be able to have sidewalk on both sides, which I imagine is why existing sidewalk is only on the west and north side. There's not, there's not sidewalk on the other side. There's some decorative lighting along the Rife Funeral Home property. I don't know if we just want to remove that, not touch it. No one's reached out to Joe yet. I'm sure we can talk to him, but. Existing retaining walls at three oh four Hayes Street Southwest and four twelve Hayes Street Southwest. We can probably work around those and regrade the yards to remove the necessity of the retaining walls, but we need to talk to those property owners because we don't currently have room for that without them granting us access to like ten foot on their property to do some of that grading. There's a large tree at five thirteen South Ave Southwest that may need to be removed. Again, no one's reached out to that property owner, but on Garfield Street, we had one large tree removal. We reached out to him as long as it didn't cost him money. He was totally fine with it. I don't know if that's going to be the same situation or not. We could probably work around it, potentially it might kill it, but we could probably work around and just increase the handwork from that intersection off to the east and just stop the paperwork short of that tree to try to save it. But again, we haven't had any discussions with that property owner yet. Big picture wise, the roadway and storm construction is just shy of eight hundred thousand. The sanitary sewer and water main upgrades is about half a million. Throw in twenty-five percent engineering contingency, which should more than cover it. We're looking total project cost like one point six for that, four and a half blocks, four, four and a half blocks.
How many takeoffs on, on Hayes Street are all those for water essentially? Is there? How much are there, like on Fourth Avenue and Fifth Avenue, is there takeoffs there for water?
Yeah, we have thirty planned, which I went and counted the houses that should.
No, I'm talking about the main, on the mains. Is there, is that, is that's been replaced? I mean, is, is there mains on Fourth Avenue that will be, and Fifth Avenue?
Tied into it?
Uh, tie into.
Yeah, we'll tie into it. I don't, I had printed the existing utility maps and I don't have.
Looks like Fifth Avenue's got tied in.
Well.
Garfield didn't have any mains, right? Water mains?
Uh, Garfield, we did replace the water main, yeah. We replaced the water and sewer. We just didn't touch the storm.
Okay, so those are fairly short mains then? Because Garfield's the next street. I'm just curious what, what we're getting.
Um, yeah, I'm sure there's, I'm sure we'll have a main connection on each of those side streets. To, and I believe all of those would be existing four-inch, and then we get to newer. There's a newer main that Crawford installed. I don't remember when Marty said, but it ends about at Fifth Avenue, and we should be tying into that. So we should have a new, we should be tied into new main once on Hayes Street, south of Fifth. But then I believe all the Fifth Avenue, Fourth Avenue, Hayes Street Northwest, Grant Street Southwest, all those side, all those other side streets will be tying into the old four-inch.
But we'll extend, extend out of our.
We're, we're going, yeah, from Highway one thirty-six to south of Fifth Street. We're getting, we're abandoning the older four-inch, the problematic four-inch. We'll abandon that in place, and we'll have new to new on both ends, and then the side streets will match up into the old mains. Is that, was that your question?
But, but we'll go out of the new ass or concrete or whatever it is. Extend them out so we don't have to redo.
Pass the eight-sixty.
When this is designed, can the elevations at each intersecting street be raised so we don't end up with the same problem that we did on Garfield where the water velocity bypasses the storm water intakes?
Are we talking like around like, was it Fourth that had those existing intakes? Are we talking north closer to First Ave on the Garfield project?
On the Garfield project, from Fifth to Main Street, you know, it's, it's one grade or the grade goes all the way to First Avenue.
Yeah.
And the water velocity by, you know, the water goes past the storm water intakes because the intersecting streets used to have more elevation.
Had, Bill would ask, well, had more to it, okay.
That, that the cross streets actually kept the water or directed the water into the intakes.
Okay, yeah. We, we can talk about, we didn't design any of the intersections.
Yeah, you're just.
Yeah, we just put, put together a concept. I mean, I don't know that we would build it with any more than two percent crown. And in this one, we have more existing storm that we're dealing with, so I don't anticipate, and it's all going, it's all going to that. I think there's two thirty-six inch or maybe.
They'd go to the park.
They'd go down to the park, so it's all gonna end up there.
There's a great big one right here.
Yeah.
Which I do believe, if I remember correctly, when we were dealing with Garfield, most of from up the hill and coming down that direction all runs down Fourth and Fifth.
Oh, it does. It's terrible.
It goes right into that. So, I mean, in these two, these intersections, we don't want, we want it to go. Because if we don't, then we're going to be back to a problem back over in this area because
Yeah.
we want it to go straight across that intersection into that main catch there.
And we did include extending and having a few additional intakes to reduce the gutter spread and get it into the pipe sooner. So hopefully the bonding and the street conditions are better than existing would be, would be the idea.
Yeah, because on Garfield, under a fairly heavy rain, the water will be out to the center line.
Yeah.
That's not abnormal on there.
Well, on this one, like, we extended it from Fourth Avenue up to that Hayes Street intersection. There's not, there's not currently storm there.
Yeah.
But we extended it so we could catch more of it coming off them side streets and reduce that gutter spread. So that way it's not running down one block until it gets to Fourth. So we did, we did, and the, the current budget does include some expansion of the, of the storm sewer system to reduce the gutter spread when we get a heavier rain.
Does anybody have anything else for Jake?
So, and this is the, this is where the guys thought was.
The top priority.
The top priority?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
For a total replacement, for doing underground and it's not that we're not going to do more surfacing, but just this one. Because the water main is so, the hydrants are so weak.
Yeah, the one especially, Phil noted, I believe it's the one at Hayes Street by the Rife Funeral Home.
Yeah.
They said when they tried to flush, that one didn't hardly flow at all.
Yeah, so that tells you, she's restricted.
Yeah.
And the water quality too, because we used to live on Fourth Ave, it wasn't super great. And then my sister currently lives there, and they complain about it all the time, that it tastes like chlorine, super bad.
So if we get, if we get a new backbone, an eight-inch too there, it should help with some of that water age in that section of town. Because the rest of that town, the rest of that section, I think, is a lot of older four-inch. But this one, then at least from the Highway one thirty-six on the one end, all the way down to Fifth Avenue on the other end, we'd be connecting in newer mains at either end. So we should get some improved water quality, lower the water age. And then we're at least connected, on either end, we're connected to new mains, even though we don't have restrictions between.
Anything else? I think you're done.
Thanks, Jake.
Thanks, Jake.
Thanks, everyone.
Do we have any, any, not necessarily for Jake, but do we have any idea on financing or where we're at that way?
Um, yeah, so I can talk about that on our next agenda item.
Gotcha.
Um, so this grant that I was just talking about is a Hinson fiscal twenty-six community project funding grant, and is actually due on Wednesday at five o'clock. So I'm going to apply for that, and we can apply for the, almost the whole project. I did anticipate using like three hundred thousand dollars of our local option money as like matching dollars. And then I've also reached out to DA Davidson already about bonds. If we don't get this funding, what would that look like? And we, if I remember during budget discussions, we talked about that the one street bond will be paid off in fiscal year twenty-six, and we can keep our payments the same with one point two million dollars for ten years. So we wouldn't be like taking our debt past, you know, what we're used to. So that's another option, but I'm hoping that we will get this grant.
How much is the grant for?
Um, we can apply for whatever.
Oh, nice.
Whatever we need. So with the project cost being one point six or one point five, we can ask for, I figured we'd ask for like one point two. So we have a couple of options with this project.
If you ask for a greater amount, does that have a bearing on whether you land that grant or not?
Um, I mean.
Do they look at the amount?
I mean, we have to have some type of matching funds.
Yeah.
So that the city is invested, and just looking at the project being one point five, one point six, and we have local option money that we could put as matching funds, I just thought maybe it'd be good, one point two, one point three, you know?
Yep. Number eight, consideration to approve resolution number twenty-nine dash twenty-five, resolution authorizing filing of a, of a Hinson fiscal year twenty twenty-six community project funding grant application to assist with the funding for the Third Avenue Southwest and Hayes Street Southwest reconstruction project.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Oliver?
I'll second.
Second by Delaney, roll call.
Oliver?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Hush?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Delaney?
Aye.
Number nine, consideration to approve resolution number thirty dash twenty-five, resolution approving entering into a contract for audit services for fiscal year twenty-five with Bergen, with Bergen KDV. This is just our normal auditing?
Yeah, it, it has increased a little bit. As I said in my memo, since we were the first city in Iowa to do our audit with them, we had kind of gotten a break for a while, but now we're kind of out of that discount era. And so our audit is going up, you know, more to where it should be, and that's a normal amount for our city, our size.
Is there any questions? If none, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Weber?
Second.
Second by Hush, roll call.
Weber?
Aye.
Hush?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Delaney?
Aye.
Oliver?
Aye.
Number ten, consideration to approve resolution number twenty-eight dash twenty-five, resolution approving agreement for professional services with NBI Engineering Services LLC for the twenty twenty-five bridge inspection services in the city of Cascade, Iowa.
Again, I, in my memo, I kind of explained that Nate Miller has done our bridge inspections for years, and he was with Origin Design, well, it was first IIW, and then it was Origin Design. And now he has kind of branched off and started his own like bridge inspection consulting company, and that's where the NBI engineering comes from. And so it's funny how we were talking about it during budget discussions, and then I had seen that it was this year, and all of a sudden he sent this proposal, so. I would recommend that we go ahead. He's, he knows what our system, our bridges all look like. He's been doing it for a long time, and I think he does a really good job.
Just for clarification, the, part of the, during budget time, I brought it up about sealing the First Avenue Bridge. And I don't think that's a normal inspection type thing. That's something that we have to do.
No, it is, it is a normal. Nate will do that.
Yeah, he'll look at all that.
He'll recommend it, and then we have to go back in and look, see when the last time it was done, and see what type of sealer we used, and so it doesn't react, and.
Yeah, but I don't think we've ever, I mean, it's been, it's been ten, twelve years, probably ten years.
It's been last ten years.
It's been a while.
Sure.
So in other words, make sure it's on the list to get looked at.
Correct.
I need a motion.
Make a motion.
Motion by Weber?
I'll second it.
Second by Gail, roll call.
Hush?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Delaney?
Aye.
Oliver?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Number eleven, consideration to approve resolution number twenty-seven dash twenty-five, a resolution to approve a final payment to Iowa Main Street investment for the downtown housing grant.
So we owe them two hundred forty thousand dollars yet. Like I said, Jim Thompson was out from Iowa Economic Development Authority, and he took pictures, he looked at the project. Of course, he was very satisfied with it, and now I'm in the process of closing out the grant and working with Brian and the state, which they've added a whole bunch of procedures and it out, but we're getting through it. And as part of that checklist, we have had to have reimbursed the final pay, payment to him, so that's why it's on.
Gotcha.
Just out of curiosity, how, how many apartments are filled or do we?
Um, they are all filled.
Okay.
And there's ten of them.
Okay, and the parking is working out as it is right now, as far as your bases are?
I talked to Brian, I would say, a month and a half ago, and he didn't have any complaints about the parking. He stopped him while I was working, so.
And his, his goal is to get the rest of the foundation down.
Yeah, and that's hopefully coming.
Possibly fix another cave in that's under the house.
Yep.
Get the garages down and add park, you know, that'll be all blacktop.
Yep.
Which would be good. We need more parking downtown.
Basically, you know, the building's standing.
Yeah. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Oliver?
Second.
Second by Weber, roll call.
Gail?
Aye.
Delaney?
Aye.
Oliver?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Hush?
Aye.
Number twelve, consideration to approve ordinance number one dash twenty-five, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cascade, Iowa by amending chapter five, one, four, Library Board. And I need a consideration to suspend the three separate meetings adoption rule and adopt the ordinance at this second meeting. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion, suspend the three, three separate.
Motion by Hush?
I'll second it.
Second by Oliver, roll call.
Delaney?
Aye.
Oliver?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Hush?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
So that's all we need to do with this one?
Then we have to approve it, right?
We have to.
Approve the ordinance. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Oliver?
I'll second it.
Second by Gail, roll call.
Gail?
Aye.
Hush?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Oliver?
Aye.
Delaney?
Aye.
Three off.
Number thirteen, consideration to approve resolution number nineteen dash twenty-five, resolution approving an employment contract between the City of Cascade, Iowa and Deanna McCusker as city administrator. Has everybody gone through this?
Is it attached in here? Or it was sent in a separate email. I apologize. It was sent.
Is there any questions or concerns with this?
I guess the city attorney's suggestions, have they been modeled into this or?
Yes, yep. Sammy took care of that this morning.
Yeah, I seen, Sammy sent an email, saying she, and a copy of it, should be in your email.
Yeah, I think you guys all received a copy, physical.
Oh, I didn't print them out, I'm sorry. I did just email them to you.
Why?
The email, you mean, the notes from the attorney? I emailed you a copy of the contract that I put together based on what the attorneys, yeah, today.
All right, okay, I assume that's incorporated into it.
Yes, I did.
From what I could tell, when I read it.
It was nothing, really.
And you're, you're presently bonded yet from?
Yes.
Previously and everything, so everything's good?
Mm-hmm.
If there's no questions, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion, approve the contract.
Motion by Gail?
Second.
Second by Weber, roll call.
Oliver?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Hush?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Delaney?
Aye.
Number fourteen, consideration to approve resolution number thirty-one dash twenty-five, resolution authorizing the filing of a Dubuque County Rural County Transportation Program, RCTP grant application to assist with the funding for the Third Avenue Southwest and Hayes Street Southwest reconstruction project in the city of Cascade, Iowa.
So we can get twenty, up to twenty-five thousand dollars, so I'm also going to apply for this grant for that project that we just discussed, so.
That'll help.
Yeah.
Is that similar to the one at the swimming pool grant, where we reconstructed?
No, this is more for just like street projects.
The street and swimming pool, that, or yours.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Delaney?
I'll second it.
Second by Oliver, roll call.
Weber?
Aye.
Hush?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Delaney?
Aye.
Oliver?
Aye.
Number fifteen, reports, Fred, anything?
Nothing other than what we handed out.
Okay, Deanna?
Okay, um, just I'll kind of go through this. We received the preliminary notification from our insurance company on our property auto and liability, we're comp insurance, and there's probably going to be a fifteen percent increase. For the property insurance, though, I did discuss maybe raising our deductible a little bit. It'll save, could save quite a bit on our premiums for that. We did receive our last proposal for software, and we're presently reviewing those, putting it in a spreadsheet, and then we'll have that for you guys to review at the next meeting. Cascade will be hosting the spring clerk meeting that is offered through ECIA, and we're going to have it at the new community room at the library on Thursday, March twentieth. Sammy will also be doing a new clerk webinar on that day. I submitted a grant to the AARP for the pickle bar project. Phil has been working with the two main companies that we get our snowplows from, and we're hoping to have quotes to review at the March twenty-fourth meeting. Reminder, I don't know if everybody got this email, but there will be a meeting on Wednesday, March twelfth. I think I sent it out, forwarded it to you guys all, but there will be a meeting. It's, it's a Zoom meeting, though, on March twelfth at four PM to review the first draft of the Cascade Downtown Plan. At the Library Board, did update the community room policy, and it's at the end of your packet. As you can see, we're not charging nonprofits or civic groups a deposit, but we would like to have a card on file in case there's any damages, and then we're going to be drafting a rental form that's similar to what we use for our parks. And then Marty Hoffman was presented with operator of the year at the annual Iowa IWWA conference.
So happy to hear you got that.
And I did make the trip to be there, which I think he was a little embarrassed, but also I think he was a little.
I don't think Marty embarrasses.
I think he was pleasantly surprised, though, to see some of us there.
Yeah, that was, that was nice.
Yeah, very cool. Again, I had mentioned I'm working on getting the downtown housing grant closed out. I will be probably, and after I get all this stuff done, I'll start working on the budget amendment for this fiscal year. We will have, start discussing sidewalk inspection. We will have, start discussing sidewalk inspections and chickens probably at the next council meeting. And then a couple of things that are a little important, on March twenty-sixth is the annual chamber dinner. And I kind of need to know like how many, I know we normally get a table. I just need to know how many people are coming so that I can let them know if we want a whole table or how many people are coming, so.
What's the date again?
March twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
So Wednesday. Fred and I will be there, my Fred.
Okay.
I'll be there too.
I will go.
I'll be there.
Chad?
No, no.
Mark?
I'll sit at my own table.
Okay. Okay, then.
If I have one.
I'll buy yourself.
Well, that's your man.
I know, right. I'm assuming you and Iowa. Okay, and then just a reminder that at the next council meeting, we will have our property tax levy hearing. And that's the one, if you remember, we have to do a separate agenda. It starts at five thirty. We have that, the only thing on the agenda. Then we'll adjourn and then at six o'clock, we will assume our regular council meeting.
That's the next meeting?
Yes, and I will, I will remind you guys.
Deanna, I will be here as close to five thirty as I possibly can, but Mila does have dance pictures at night, so.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. I'm going to try to find a mom to help her.
I probably could put it at, we could put it at five forty-five because literally that's the only thing on the agenda and it literally takes.
It won't take long.
Five minutes.
Five forty-five works for me.
Worst case scenario, I will call in, but I should be here. I just, I'll try to find a substitute mom for her, but.
Anything else? If there's nothing else for the betterment of the community, I need a motion to adjourn.
Just really, really looking forward to having the chickens on the next council meeting.
They're coming.
I can tell you're, you're pretty.
Very excited about the chickens.
Need a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Oliphant?
Second.
Second by Hush, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thanks.